And welcome to the September 12th meeting of the Dover School Committee, the Sherborne School Committee, and the Dover Sherborne Regional School Committee. My name is Judy Miller, and I call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting at the Dover Sherborne Middle School this evening, and we are also live streaming it on DSC TV. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. Our first order of business is community comments. Do we have anyone, any community comments?
One person on Zoom, but I don't know if they have a community comment. Anybody on Zoom have a community comment?
Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to number three on our agenda, which is school committee norms. And I have asked Maggie to explain this and talk about it because she is really good at it.
Particularly, you know, for anyone who's watching from home or for our new members who've joined us since the last time that we sort of met and did a large scale like debrief of norms. We went through as a joint committee, you know, sort of doing some work with Dorothy Presser, who's representative from the Mass Association of School Committees, and then just doing some work within our own committees and thinking about as members come on and come off that, you know, obviously, we know from open meeting a lot, there are limits to the amount of chit chat that we can do with one another that can sometimes be challenging because it's completely different than in any other, you know, sort of organization you might be involved in. And understanding that as school committee members, we just need to sort of think about what are our common ground rules that we would use in terms of communicating with each other, either, you know, through subcommittees or in our common, you know, meetings. And over the last two years, we've developed and then sort of, I would say, honed norms that started with the basis of what the mass school committees suggest as norms, and then through discussion with prior year school committees, has kind of come to be the norms that we've collectively adopted as our group. So everyone, particularly new folks, have had a chance to preview it in the packet. Probably it's more than a long discussion that we'd want to have tonight, but because are we adopting them tonight to vote on them?
We adopt, that's a good question. We adopted them in January. And so if, I think that we don't have to do anything to adopt them unless, unless members have a, something that they want to change. So I think that we are discussing them, answering questions, and seeing if anyone has any changes, and then if not, move forward. Does that seem right? Does that seem right to you, Maggie?
That seems very logical. So particularly for new members, but also for anyone who's been one of the school committee reps for a couple of years, are there things that you read in the norms or, you know, that you looked through and had a question about or a concern about? Okay, well, that's great. I think that suggests that we did a good job of prior generations in trying to come up with norms that would feel good and create kind of nice guardrails and also understanding of, you know, what our responsibilities to one another are and also for community members that might wonder, you know, how we interact with one another or how things go, what that is about. Feel free to, if you have questions about the norms, to reach out to your chair. You know, certainly they can be revisited at any time depending on how we're feeling or if we feel that something isn't really kind of going the way it suggests that it would on this document. And also, you know, with norm work, feel free during the course of the year, if something's going on even in a meeting, I would suggest that doesn't feel, you know, to come back to these and say, hey, you know, I thought that, you know, part of it was to encourage debate and different points of view, but we've already made a decision about that, and now I think we need to move on as a team, or, you know, whatever, to come back and refer to the norms would be a reasonable thing to do. I think that's it.
Yeah, and as, as each year, we're faced with different challenges. And we just went through a period of time where the challenges were tremendous. And the norms are really helpful in giving us guidance as to how we should be working as a team. And exactly what Maggie said, if challenges come up and you feel that there may be norms that might help to, for us to operate better, let's talk about it.
Yeah. You know, and I would, you know, point, I mean, all each of them sort of has their own little flavor. But, you know, one thing that has come up in the, you know, seven years I've been working on these committees is for, one thing that's different for us as a team of, say, 16 school committees is that, you know, speaking to the superintendent. That's a very open door kind of person, but we've sort of agreed in our norms that if I have a concern, I'll chat with Judy so she can communicate with Beth on a general basis. You know, if it's something really like low pressure, you know, hey, I noticed that there was a spelling mistake or whatever, you know, definitely an email would be quick. But, you know, if it's, I really want to talk about, you know, what our policy on school snow days is, and I think we should be doing this whole other thing to bring it to Judy so she can filter it. And that's really around having 16 members, and if everybody wants to have an hour-long conversation with the superintendent every week, that's like a good chunk of their day. And that's like something that has in the past come up as a sticky widget. Because, you know, oftentimes, we do have big issues or things that are close to our heart that we have concerns about. And so trying to work cooperatively with our individual chairs so that they can manage the flow of information. It doesn't mean it's like a cutoff or that, you know, Judy or Dennis isn't gonna, you know, share that information, just more in terms of trying to help us to manage Beth and Denny's time and kind of help them. And that's kind of it. You know, each of them, if you have any questions, ask, particularly new folks, ask your more seasoned members because a lot of times we could tell you a story about you how it came to be, if you were interested. Anyway, that's it from me.
So Maggie, I'm sorry. I definitely really appreciated the norms. I guess my question as a new person to this committee is, how is that accessible to our community members? I saw a lot of points on there that I think vital context for what is that we do here. And I think that, you know, made the community at large benefit from having access.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's in the packets, right? And we've talked about it on our meetings annually. I don't know, Denny, as we flesh out the website, if there's a school committee page? If we, could we just publish the norms as their own little bullet?
I feel like that would be a great one.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a link to it right now. I think, yeah, the link's on there, but we want them spelled out so you don't even have to click.
I mean, no, like, I think you would have to click. It could say "school committee norms."
I'll make a page, it'll be fine.
Okay, you know, don't give more work. If I knew how to do it, I would do it. Because, yeah, and I think that it is also about that communication to community members. And for each of us as school committee members, if we're out on the town and somebody is saying, well, I don't think you're doing a very good job because really you should be, ba-da-da-da-da-dah, you can say, well, actually, that's not how our board operates, and it might be helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so now we will move on to Superintendent McCoy's update.
Great, thank you. Welcome back. Happy new school year to everyone. It's nice to see your faces. I hope that you had a restful summer with your family and did some things that you love and enjoy. Before we launch into talking about goals and all of the excitement that comes with bringing our students back to school, I do want to take a moment to recognize the loss that our community experienced this summer, both the loss of Sadie Morrow and J.B. Harvey. So we could just take a minute of silence, please. Thank you. With that said, I do really want to thank all of the members of the school committee, Dover Sherborne and Boston families, and our educators for all of the support they have been providing to our students and to these families throughout the summer. No matter where anybody was on our crisis team or otherwise, they stopped whatever they were doing, we came together to support each other. So thank you for all of your efforts in that. Our principals have been doing a great job rolling this out as the staff and the students return to school, they'll be talking about it in their individual updates to their committees. And I will say that at our opening launch with our educators, I talked about the strengths that we found through the entry process that Denny and I went through last year, being around, you know, the fact that our communities value school so much, that our communities value open space, that we care about the whole child, but most importantly, we care about building relationships. And I think it's the relationships that our students have built with their educators and with each other X many years that they've been in the system that has helped us get through these difficult times. And I think what's touching is when we talked to the families that have been most affected this summer, as well as the student panel that presented for our new educators without even prompting the kids. And we said, what do you value about DS? What do you love about the schools? First thing they said is the relationships I have with adults. So I think that we're very lucky. Nobody would ever wish this on a community, but for any community to be able to work through this, we are very blessed to have each other. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I also want to recognize the library space that we're in. With every FED, there's a silver lining, we think. Many thanks to Dawn and Sean and the middle school team for their patience this summer. Literally Dawn was here nights, weekends, rotating like every eight hours with Sean to make sure somebody was here to get a Donut pie. And here we are. And so this space will soon be a Zoom space where we'll have a fisheye camera and a microphone so that when Dennis is able to join us or whoever, it'll be much more fluid. But that said, we're still in a transition period, and our new Zoom room will not be ready until October. So hence, we're a little out of sorts today. We're using a tiny projector that isn't wonderful, which makes me sad because we spend a lot of time on these slides and we didn't take time to look at them otherwise. But we'll just leave them up there to kind of keep things flowing. So again, thank you, Dawn, for all of the time because this was quite a feat.
It's an interesting.
All right, so the new year. So for Denny and myself, the new year starts in mid-January when we get together with all the superintendents from Massachusetts and are welcomed by the commissioner and talk about our goals and kind of big initiatives as a state. Then mid-August, we come together with the leadership team and have a retreat. This year, we had it at the Elm Bank in Wellesley, beautiful among the gardens, which ended up being a theme of going back to our roots as a community. So it was, you know, Dawn's suggestion that we started there, and then Denny and I took this idea of plants and really ran with it. And the amount of like puns and, you know, stories we have now around plants and roots and growth, it's really quite phenomenal. But we enjoyed having 19 members of our leadership team there. As you know, we now have three special education coordinators who joined us. So our leadership team has grown in that regard, as well as our Director of Community Resources was there for the first day, and my coach, John Sills. So we had a great, great opportunity to collaborate, to talk about goals for the year, and enjoy the beautiful space. So you see here, everybody's wearing blue because it's Dover Sherborne in the garden. That was on purpose. Denny and I found out how to change the colors. That's what you do when you're really tired at the end of the day. You're like, I can change the blue. But we had two days together, and we really went thinking about like, why do we do this work? Like, you know, this is not easy work. To, what is it that we're trying to do for this strategic plan? To, how are we going to do this with the specific goals and action steps? To, how do we make this happen from day one with the logistics and all of those things? We had several objectives, which I won't read to you, but lots accomplished over team building, looking at the strategic, the district strategy, which we'll be talking about later, thinking about our educator goals, which we talked about at the regional meeting, and we'll be talking about in Dover and Sherborne as well, how we communicate, which is a goal for the district this year, and then obviously the opening of schools. But again, back to our roots, and this is mentioned just recently in our regional meeting, which is, you know, through the pandemic, through some difficult conversations around diversity, equity, inclusion, through some changes in leadership that have affected the district level and the building levels. There's, and lots of new families, you have families graduating, new families who have come, and either because of their kiddos being super little or the pandemic, they don't know what challenge success is. They don't understand, you know, the portrait of a graduate, where did this come from? So really going back to, what is it that holds us true to being a Dover Sherborne school district and starting from there so that, as we talked about all of the quotes around roots in our leadership retreat, everybody got a, what do you call it, Denny?
Succulent.
Succulent plant. And everybody had a different quote in it about roots, and then they figured out that was the theme was roots because every quote was about roots. But when your roots are deep, you can't be touched by the frost. And so when we go through difficult times as a community, whether it's the loss of a loved one or whether it's difficult conversations, if you know where you're grounded as an individual, as an educator, and as a district, you can go back to that and say, nope, this is where we stand and this is how we're going to move forward for kids. So that's the whole idea there. When you know your why, your what becomes more impactful. Judy, I don't know if you want to share your experience at opening day with the teachers, what you got to witness with Mr. Buck?
Oh.
So we had the district launch, and Judy and Dennis were there as chairs to help us give out the ABL awards.
We got to hear Mr. Buck sing "Amazing Grace." And it was so amazing and so apropos to how everyone was feeling and what we were all needing, you know, some grace. And it was really, and remind me, because he sang it twice, and that was really impactful, remind me of how that worked.
So this is all 300 educators and educational assistants together for our opening day, the Monday before the Wednesday when our kiddos come. And I went around asking people what they do. So Denny, what do you do? You're the assistant superintendent. Mark, what do you do? I'm, you know, director of science. Dawn, what do you do? I'm the director of physics. And then I went to Darren, and I said, what do you do? He said, well, I teach technology and, you know, I kind of sing because he's in a band. I was like, oh, you sing? So I said, can you sing us a couple lines? He said, any song? I said, sure. He said, "Amazing Grace," because we had just talked about JD, JB and Sadie. He said, we could all use some grace. So he sang a couple lines of "Amazing Grace" and his Darren back way. And we're like, oh, that's great. And I was like, okay, so now, sing it as though you were, you know, at the Super Bowl or you were asked to attend the next inauguration. That's your purpose, sing it. And he sang it as though like it was his whole heart and soul going into it, and he got the rounds of applause, and people standing, people tearing up. And the whole idea is you can know your why, like, I can sing. But if you have a purpose, you then sing to that purpose and you work towards that purpose, which makes it that much more impactful. So when we know what our purpose is as educators or what our purpose is as a district, then the work we do with kids is more impactful. So that's the whole idea.
It was a wonderful illustration of that. It was just, it was fantastic.
Wait, and that was him pumping? He knew?
No.
He's a good sport, right? So going back to our roots, why are we doing this work? And let's think about the skills that our kids need in the portrait of a graduate so that when we think about how we do this work, how we teach, what we teach for the curriculum, the strategies you use in the classroom are really lining us up for those kids to be practicing those skills. That's the idea there. And so at our leadership retreat, when our educators reflect on their whys, why do we continue to do this work through good times and bad? They developed using Canvas, our Canva, their own, you know, quotes or ideas totally from scratch of posters of their why. We've gotten them printed, they're now hanging on their walls that when they have a bad day and they can't find their Denny or they can't find their Dawn, they can just go read the poster and say, okay, I'm doing this because. The educators, we did the same conversation and Darren singing at opening day and asked them to create a why slide. And we now have a slide deck of 200 whys throughout the district that we can put up on, you know, the screens or we can share with each other. We want to go back to them at our November PD Day just to check in on how people are feeling and why we're here. So these are just some great examples, and they're all so different, but super powerful. So I hope you take a few minutes to look at them. I took the names off just because I hadn't asked in advance, but. So moving forward, the question is, if we want our students to master the portrait of a graduate skills, which set the foundation and the roots of what we think our kids need for the future, how are we going to teach in the classroom and what are we going to teach in the curriculum? And this is where we come back to talking about the best practices, which we started last year, and really solidifying what are our best practices, K to 12, that we all agree should be alive in our classrooms every day, not just a touch here and a touch there. How should we be teaching all of our kids every day in order for them to be at the center of the learning? And the curriculum audit that we started last year around making sure that students have agency, that they're represented in the curriculum, the what, what is it that they're looking at and what is it that they're learning? And is it relevant to who they are as a person, to the world that they're seeing right now and to the world that they're going to be entering in five, 10, or 15 years? And I will, before I pass it over to Denny, just mentioned that, we talked about this obviously as leaders and as educators at opening day, but we'll be talking about this as a community this year. So here you see outlined kind of how we're plugging in these roots throughout the year for people who need a refresher or an introduction to either the district and who we are and what we stand for, challenge success, some of our restorative practices, the idea of belonging and DEI, where is that coming from? And then in March and April, you'll see that we're revisiting actually to the activities we did with the Academic Innovation Committee when we created the Portrait of a Graduate, which is having a panel of a variety of different voices and faces talking about the work that they do and what they need in their employees now and in the future, and what does that mean for our students? And then having a college panel of professors and admissions reps, private, public, big, small, rural, urban, saying, what are you looking for in kids now, perhaps different than when we applied to college? And what does that mean for the work we do with our students? And how do we support our students to stand out from the pack and make themselves known when everybody's reading their applications and deciding where they'll land? So we'll be revisiting the district's roots as a community too for anybody who needs either a boost or an introduction to any of these ideas. So diving a little bit, no, I didn't change anything. All right, Denny, we're gonna skip to you, and then we'll come back to me.
Oh, great. So just some highlights from the teaching and learning. First thing is that I'm really grateful in Dover and Sherborne that we provide teachers with summer workshop days where we pay them to work on curriculum. And I think we realized throughout COVID that, you know, people's time is really important to them. So I think it's wonderful that we provide them with, you know, segments over the summer so that they can get these curriculum initiatives done. We've had a lot of great work over the summer, so this is just some of the highlights of them. A lot of grades worked on curriculum map provisions, math differentiation, new maker space activities, eighth grade civics, which we'll be hearing more about throughout the year, the Earth and Space Curriculum at the middle school level, financial literacy. So just a huge variety of different projects that teachers took on this summer and collaborations that occurred over the summer. So that's just a highlight of the summer workshop days. But one of the biggest things I want to talk about is our instructional launch. So going along with everything that Superintendent McCoy just talked about in terms of the leadership retreat and our district launch, on August 22nd, we got all of our elementary PLC leaders together, our middle school curriculum leaders, and our high school department heads to try to launch the year in terms of our teaching and learning focus. So these were the essential questions that we worked with for that day. What is our purpose as educators, getting to that why? Why do we do this? Why is now an important inflection point in time? And what does this mean for education? So we talked a little bit about AI and all the tools that are at people's disposal, how the world is changing. So why is now this big turning point in terms of a moment in time? What needs to happen in the classroom in order to fully actualize the portrait of the graduate competencies and prepare our students to be successful in a rapidly changing world? And then we also talked a little bit about the instructional core, which is the relationship between student, teacher, and content, and thinking about how we need to kind of balance out and take care of all those different points of that instructional core triangle. So one of the things that was a big highlight from the instructional launch is last year, you may recall, that we did the best practices and each of the schools, each of the four schools, came up with a list of best practices. And then over the summer, Superintendent McCoy and I sat down and we tried to see what all of them had in common. And this is where we landed upon, in terms of this graphic, in terms of the nine best practices that, again, originated from the teachers in the buildings last year and now have become spread throughout K through 12. So relationships, voice, agency, relevance, equitable access, critical thinking, collaboration, individualization, and growth. And at the instructional launch, we broke the leaders, teacher leaders, into groups, and we gave them our kind of core documents. So challenge success, portrait of a graduate, competencies, work that we had done last year around diversity, equity, inclusion, MTSS and universal design for learning. And we had them do a walk around the room and look at all these nine best practices and fill in where they saw each of those things falling. So these nine best practices have now kind of been fully vetted by our teacher leaders, and we know that all those elements of diversity, equity, inclusion, of MTSS, universal design for learning are baked into these. So we don't have to keep going back to some of the edgy jargon and the terms and the abbreviations. We know now, because the instructional leaders have done this, that they're all part of these nine best practices. So now, the work this year is rolling out these best practices and looking more specifically at what these look like and feel like and sound like in the classrooms. So giving grade levels and departments the opportunity to think about, what does this idea of voice look like inside my eighth grade science classroom? What does this idea of collaboration look like in a first grade classroom? So groups of teachers are going to be working this year to develop those very specific ideas of how these are manifested throughout the curriculum and be able to collaborate with each other to share what they do in terms of these nine best practices in the classroom. So that was the instructional launch. There's something else I was going to say about it that I can't think about. One of the things that, one of the things that the teacher leaders brought up was, they are very familiar with all of these documents. They've heard a lot about challenge success, they know about MTSS. But one of the teachers brought up at the instructional launch, what do we do for new staff as they're coming in so that they can learn about all these things? When they hear challenge success, they can understand what that is, which kind of flows into the next big thing that we had that week, which was new staff orientation. And we did a bit of a different version of it this year. Having sat through it last year, this year, we kind of like put a different spin on it. So one of the first activities we did with all of the new staff is we had all of our main core documents scattered around the room. So challenge success, our definition of diversity, equity, inclusion, portrait of a graduate, what MTSS means to Dover Sherborne. And they walked around the room with sticky notes, and they wrote questions and comments and wonderings that they had about each of these things. So they got this first exposure to what these ideas are. And we talked about them very honestly in terms of where we stand as a district with all of them. And so we laid out in the morning for them, this is what our district stands for. And then in the afternoon, we had a student panel because we kind of wanted to put our money where our mouth is. Like, if this is what we say we stand for, what are the students experiencing? That was part of Superintendent McCoy and I at the superintendent's conference over the summer, the importance of bringing student voice into everything we do. We thought it was really powerful that our new staff, on their first day, are hearing directly from our students. So we had a fantastic student panel. Everybody was so engrossed in it that nobody took a picture of it, which is why we had every day graphic up there. But it was really powerful for us to have heard, talked about these ideas in the morning and then for the new staff to actually see that this is actually happening. And like Superintendent McCoy said, the relationships piece came through a lot. And in the morning, teachers said, I think what I'm gathering about Dover Sherborne is that teachers really care about their students, they want to make connections with their students, that the district values that. And then for the students to say, this is what I value about my education in my experience, was just very validating and it was really great to hear from the students talking about their highlights, things they love from their time in Dover Sherborne, things that they, advice they would give to new staff. So it turned out to be a really, really good new staff orientation. So that's my little update.
All right, so that kind of takes care of the big teaching and learning piece. Before I go into logistics, would it be okay to take questions now on the kind of big ideas?
Yeah.
Before we go into nuts and bolts?
So not a question, but a comment. But I just wanted to applaud you both, but also the teachers that really do break down those incredibly impactful themes at a totally developmentally appropriate level. That is, that in my mind, there's just, you know, so many fireworks firing. Everybody needing the child where the child is and not just large sweeping brushstrokes, just really thinking about the kids. And I think that's wonderful and such an incredible talent to have in our district. Additionally, would you mind sharing any of the suggestions or advice that you feel appropriate from the students that they shared during their panel discussion?
I think one of the things that popped up is they really liked hands-on experiences and experiential learning. They liked place-based learning, so a lot of them talked about field trips or going to Hill. So those are some of the big suggestions they gave about ways we can build that in, take advantage of, you know, close to Boston, all the things that surround us. So those are the main takeaways that a lot of the students were talking about. More time for lunch and things like that.
They're big fans of Officer West, the dog.
Yes.
And we learned that it breaks their soul, I think, is how they said it. It breaks their soul when they have busy work that's not meaningful.
Yeah.
Was it primarily high school students or what age range?
Middle and high.
Middle and high.
High school.
And it was a broad range of kiddos and different experiences and different perspectives.
We're gonna find a way to get the elementary voice in there next year, working on it.
Okay, so that's the teaching and learning piece. We'll just go back for a few logistics. Again, I apologize for jumping around a little bit here. We celebrated new educators at our opening launch. We have 33 new teachers, guidance counselors, nurses, 12 new educational assistants, many rejoining us obviously, as well as some folks in other roles. We have several folks who achieved professional status, means they're entering their fourth year. year and are now completely covered by the contract moving forward. So Andrew McCorkle and Devon Benaria from Chickering, Janey Aguilar, Amy Beagle, Nikki Carter, Ally Maury from Pine Hill, Allison Lutley, Bridget, Melon Richard, then Wendy Rush from the middle school, and Kigraziano. So congratulations to joining the permanent family now that we are marrying them and no longer dating them as educators. Also celebrating service, many, many years here. If you add these up to all of these amazing educators who are celebrating 15, 20, 25, and even 30 years servicing as students of Dover Sherborne and Boston. So thank you to Kim, Laura, Lori, Carrie, Renee, and Lori Whitney from Chickering to Mr. Gimlet, our custodian at Pine Hill, and Cindy Sittman. Middle school, we have Heidi Luendo, Veronica Moy, Sandra Samarco, Donna Bettigan, and Mark Thompson. And at the high school, Janice Berry, Allison Collins with Grady, Emre Crede, Mary Andrews, Lindsay Lee, Bonnie Turfo, and Joshua Durrell, celebrating big milestones. And thank you to both Judy and Dennis for being there to recognize them with their apples at opening day.
And Bonnie, just so you know, is our cook at the Regent Kitchen, so we recognize all staff.
Andy As, yeah. The district priorities, as for those of you who just sat through the regional school committee meeting and heard from John and Ann, I hope you know, see that there's no surprise that our district priorities this year are around developing this vision for teaching and learning and the best practices and how and what we teach, the student sense of belonging and making sure that all students feel like they belong, so that they can learn at high levels and at deep levels. And then continuing to work on communication so that all parents have access to information about our beliefs, our roots, our practices, and that there's no question as to who we are and what we do as a district. So those are our goals moving forward. Getting ahead to more nuts and bolts. Danny's new website is up and running.
It's so good. It's so good.
Oh, yes. So fun to, so enjoyable.
The calendar and the lunch menu buttons. Very helpful.
The number one thing you need, that website.
Yes. Yeah.
Has the Atlanta that's told you that everybody goes there and just goes to lunch menu? Actually, we need to dive into those anecdotes.
Can you incorporate the strategic plan? But thank you again to Danny and Angie and all of our assistant principals and the IT team who worked on this. And it's still a work in progress and they're open to feedback. We're all open to feedback and they'll continue to grow and evolve with us as a district. But phenomenal launch and a phenomenal place to start, so thank you there. I'm sure notice that at the bottom of the home screen, there's a place where there's news posted, events that you can see across all four buildings, like what's, you know, soon to be on your radar, as well as all of the social media feeds are all coming into one place. So you can capture the teaching and learning and activities that are happening day to day right there on our homepage. The calendar page is fantastic because it has the academic calendar for the district for the year, as well as an all-in-one calendar that you can filter in the schools that you're associated with based on your children and you can see everything all in one place. So that's exciting. Danny created a Dover Sherborne Communication Hub where there is one spot, and it is one of those fancy buttons right next to the lunch menus, where you go to the Communication Hub and you can get the newsletters from all four schools and central office. You can get the principals' reports that you all read every month and we hope everybody else reads too, because there's so much information on them. So you're looking for information, you want to know about the academics, it's right at your fingertips, all in one click now. So that's exciting. Thank you again to Danny and the team for doing that. District-wide preparedness continues to be a priority for us. We have a district-wide response team that meets twice per year, usually once in the fall, once in the spring, more if necessary, and that brings together all of our building leaders, our nurses, our head of guidance, as well as our police and fire chiefs to talk about lessons learned from recent events and making sure that we have the essential tools and training to keep our students and staff safe. Through the negotiation process, we formalized now that each of the four schools has a building-based emergency team that again, meet at the beginning of the year and then after drills or after events to debrief and talk about what their needs are moving forward. Fortunately and unfortunately, some of our schools have already brought their emergency teams together. Pine Hill has had a few pickups recently and we've had some unannounced fire drills at both middle and high schools. So we have emergency teams in place and we are using them. And we're also conducting our training. We've already, we're far ahead in our training calendar thanks to all these little blips. But staff training, certainly we go over evacuations, shelter in place and lockdown at the opening faculty meetings on the first two days of faculty. And on the September 19th, 20th?
19th.
19th, meeting for new educators in the district. We have Synergy 911 coming to do the whole training with them. And we're inviting all of our returning staff and veteran staff who need a refresher to come as well. So we continue to offer that to make sure that our staff are up to date and feeling comfortable with how we carry out drills. And then we've already done our evacuation drills, all four schools for fire drills. We'll be conducting our bus evacuation soon. Pine Hill already did their shelter in place, the other three schools will be doing theirs as well. And then practicing lockdowns once in the fall and once in the spring continues to be, again, a priority and I just want to commend the Pine Hill team. They went into a shelter in place because we thought there was a gentleman trying to enter the building who ended up just being a painter coming to check on the work that he had done previously. But they were ready and they did it seamlessly and flawlessly and the kids continued learning and eating and having indoor recess and didn't think twice about it. And then they were able to debrief and move on. So the training works and we hope that we continue to have the preparedness we need should anything else happen. On the extended day programs, I'm going to put a pause on this and then Donna will cover that a little bit later on the agenda, but you do have a full memo with the same information in your packets. The calendar task force is up and running. We've had three official meetings and thanks to Christine and Golie and Judy for being on that committee, but we have a solid group of students, educators, parents, administrators, and the folks sitting in this room serving on that committee. We had two meetings in the spring to kind of outline our process. We have perfected a survey and had so much conversation and feedback on it. I think it's probably going to be one of the best surveys we've ever launched. That'll be going out later this week. And then we'll be coming back in October to look at the results of the survey, develop some proposals based on everybody's feedback, perhaps send it out one more time for additional feedback and input from the larger DS community. And then they'll be presenting to you at the end of January their thoughts and recommendations moving forward in terms of what our school calendar could and should look like with additional or fewer holidays involved. So it's up and running. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention the start time review. So just prior to the pandemic, we had decided to change start times. The pandemic hit, so it kind of became a lesser important topic because we had other bigger fish to fry, although we did make the change. The last couple of years, it's been difficult to determine which variable is affecting sleep, which variable is affecting behavior, which variable is affecting learning because of all of the package that came with the pandemic. So we're at a time now where we feel like we collect information from surveys from students, families, and faculty, as well as quantitative data from our student information system, from our social emotional learning surveys, from our academic dashboards, to kind of look at 2019 and where we were in terms of sleep, academic achievement, social emotional wellness, early dismissals, late arrivals, those kinds of things. And now, and look at what were our goals in terms of shifting the start time? Have we accomplished those goals? Were there some unintended consequences? What are they? Can we address them? And do we need to make any shifts? So Danny and Kate are taking the lead on and collecting this data. We'll have a first report out in January at your joint meeting and then probably a follow-up in the spring. And that's it for our report.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
Don's gonna come back to Dida and Sheida.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, are we gonna do that at the end? Is that right?
Yeah, it's under communications as well.
Okay, good. All right, so then district strategy presentation?
Okay. So I won't go too much into detail because I don't need to redo the entire slideshow, but I did start, I started with the slideshow that you saw in June, which was, again, the entry process. Danny and I did a lot of listening and learning through interviews, focus groups, surveys, looking at lots of documents early last year. We shared with you findings in April and then spent May and the summer working with the larger leadership team to say, if this is what we found about the district, what does that mean in terms of what we should do next to move towards our goals? So again, I just reminding you of the process we went through. We found five buckets as themes, excellence in innovation and learning. Again, our findings that we presented to you in April were strengths in these buckets and areas for growth, and then the questions that the leadership team needed to chew on in terms of how do we address those areas for growth? So we have the five buckets there. This summer, we came together and now tonight, we're presenting to you the five buckets with their strategic initiatives. So the idea here is that for each of the five buckets, we see as priorities, priority areas for the districts, there's three to five action steps that we would take for each one, not all at the same time, because we can't do that many things well at once. But over the next three to five years to move us towards that vision for what Dover Sherborne should look like in the 21st century. So under excellence and innovation and learning, we again have that vision for 21st century learning. What should our classrooms look like when you walk in? What should they sound like? We have a portion of a graduate, but how do we measure whether kids are attaining those skills? Do we need to add in some standards to our report cards so that they're more informative about students attaining those skills? Continuing with the curriculum audit we started last year, looking at data points to say, what are our goals as a district and are we making progress in academics and social emotional learning and behavior? And then what technology strategies do we need? Because I think the technology plan at this point is probably 10 years old. A lot has changed, both with the pandemic and then even just this year with artificial intelligence. So what is it that we need to be teaching our kids? Because certainly there's a lot of things that we as adults nor kids need to be able to do anymore. Side note, advertisement, Danny and I recently watched a video. There is, there are enough apps out there now available to teachers and I'm sure that there's apps in all of our different areas of expertise and careers, but that will develop lesson plans for you based on Massachusetts standards or otherwise that are hands-on, differentiated. They'll create the pair deck and the slide deck for you, the assessment and the rubric. And you can do that in 15 minutes. So just to give you insight into how the teacher's job is changing, you know, we can only imagine what our kids' jobs are going to look like, so how do we get these tools into our teachers and our kids' hands to get them ready for this ever-changing world? This just blew my mind. But we can talk about that another time.
I have a question about that. Is part of that, and maybe we already do this, I'm not sure, but teaching, like not everything on the internet is true and critical thinking and evaluation and that kind of stuff as the world has changed?
Yep. That'll be in the, it has been and will be in the technology plan.
Great.
So challenging and supporting all students, again, I'm hoping that these aren't surprises to you, that they were heard through the findings that we presented in the spring. Identifying essential content, so there's lots and lots of pages of frameworks and standards that our kids are supposed to know, but what's really at the core of it so that we can then differentiate to make sure that all kids get those really bullseye ideas, that content, those skills. And then how do we differentiate for students who have already met them or students who are struggling to meet them? And how do we calibrate across levels, especially at the high school when we have CP and honors level? How do we make sure that the level of challenge is appropriate at both of those levels and kind of not only calibrated within a department but across departments? We want to make sure that our teachers are continuing to fill their toolbox with inclusive practices so that they can meet the needs of all of our learners, those who need additional time, those who need additional challenges, those who are English learners, those who have special education plans. Want to continue to work on our MTSS support system, which you've heard much about over the years, promoting a positive school culture, which again, we talked about tonight, that sense of belonging for our kids. And then integrating restorative practices, which the region talked about tonight, and then elementars will be talking about in the next couple of weeks, making sure our students have time to reflect and learn from their choices. Professional growth, making sure that there are, there's adequate support and coaching. We have a lot of expectations. There are nine best practices that the district has identified that we want to see living in our classrooms. Do we have enough coaches and support to help our teachers be able to do them? It's one thing to go to a professional development workshop and learn about something, but then it's actually to have the time and the coaching and the support to implement it in the classroom. So do we have enough support to make that happen, to make that shift? We want to make sure that just like we differentiate for our kids, that we have different opportunities for educators who are at different places in their professional development journeys. We want to make sure that the supervision and evaluation process, which takes a lot of time from our leaders, is actually valuable and giving meaningful feedback and not just checking boxes. That's a goal we've been working on and will continue to work on. And then continuing to recruit and support both highly qualified and diverse educators, which we haven't yet looked at our statistics this year, but I know we've done a pretty good job of making a step towards achieving that goal and we'll continue to do that moving forward. Family and community engagement, again, no surprises between timely effective systems of communication between home and school, making sure that everybody's aware of our goals and our practices, there's no questions there, making sure there aren't any barriers for families to participate in events. And then enhancing the Metco experience to make sure that our Boston students have access to the same thing that our Dover and Sherborne students do and that we're continuing to build the relationships between all of those families. And last but not least, safe and sustainable spaces. We've talked about safety and how important that is. We've talked about the need for additional space and maybe upgrading facilities and maybe some cool air in some of our buildings. How do we make sure that our spaces are not only large enough, but they're designed to get kids to think in a collaborative, creative way as we prepare them for the AI world of the future? And of course, how can we be more green and support the world that our kids are going to grow up in with them? So those are the big five buckets with the three to five initiatives in each bucket that we'd like to work on for the next three to five years, perhaps beyond that. I do know, and I do want to point out and make explicit, the fact that we did a lot of work around diversity, equity, inclusion last year. We had the audits from NYU. We tried to take the recommendations, unpack them as a community, understand what they mean in the classroom for kids. You may or may not remember this document that we outlined, kind of what this looks like for teaching and learning, as we tried to explain to the community what DEI really means in the classroom. This is not disappearing, but similar to challenge success, there's years and years of years saying, in the spirit of challenge success, we're going to have a homework free weekend. In the spirit of challenge success, we're going to work on having meaningful homework and not busy work. But now it's kind of just who we are as a school. And yes, we have a challenge success committee and board, but they're not as active as they used to be because we've started to adopt those practices in our day-to-day work. These DEI goals are baked into the strategic plan. So to reassure you, those are the five buckets that I just talked about. And as we move into the next plan, the next stage of this plan, which is going step by step of what's going to happen in year one, what's going to happen in year two, what's Danny responsible for, what's Dawn responsible for, you're going to see all of these things pop up. So they are going to be secured into the strategic plan. They're just not a separate bucket because they're good practice and we should be doing them for all kids. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that the audit and DEI work wasn't disappearing, it was just being, as Danny said, baked into the work that we do. I talked about the goals already. These are our year one goals in support of where we would launch with the strategic initiatives. And then in terms of long-term planning, these are kind of the big placeholders of the work that we'll be doing this year, working on the best practices and finishing the curriculum audit, then moving towards mapping the curriculum. So it's transparent what we're teaching kids when and that everything's aligned, moving to looking towards assessments and common assessments and how we assess kids and giving kids options and choices and how they demonstrate their learning, looking at our grading practices, and then eventually our report cards and student portfolios. So it's a long process to kind of get to this vision, but there's the general outline. And as you'll see when I go over my proposed superintendent goals, they're all in support of the year one district goals. Lots of talking, sorry.
No, that's okay.
But it's 14 months of research and work, so there it is.
I guess I have a, and this may be too long for you to answer here, but how does this, how is this the same or different or dovetail with our strategic plan that we had up to this point?
It actually, there's a lot of overlap. And so I pulled from the new superintendent induction program a specific sheet that talks about the difference between the strategic plan that Andrew and I created and a district strategy, which is what you now have. The big differences, and I don't necessarily see them, a strategic plan is often developed by a third party where you have someone come in. That wasn't our case because Andrew and I did that. A district initiative focuses a lot on teaching and learning as opposed to, it's all how can we affect what kids experience? So there's nothing in here necessarily about the budget or there's nothing in here necessarily about recycling specifically. It's trying to make teaching and learning and focus really on that and let the other things kind of happen outside of them, focusing on doing a few things at once so the list isn't quite as long as you might have seen in our last plan. And that we will continually go back and reassess to see where we're at and where things need to shift. There's not a lot of difference, to be honest.
Okay.
I tried to poke through it.
Yeah.
But there's some things that carried over that we didn't get to with the last one and they're still relevant.
Yeah, and that's what I see as well. I just want to make sure I was seeing this, that I was understanding it. Comments, questions? This is a huge amount of work, by the way. Really wonderful work.
Dennis, do you have any questions?
Wait.
You're a mute.
Double mute. Just, can you hear me?
Yep.
I just want to acknowledge and thank everybody that was involved in pulling this together. I would echo, it was a ton of work and thank you for sending it out early to give all of us time to kind of read it, digest it, and kind of reflect on it. So thank you.
I do have a question on the pivot on the DEI goals. And it's also much a pivot. I do support embedding the goals in basically the business as usual, I think is what you're referring to. My question is around, how do we make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to them? So for the challenge success, it sounds like we've got a committee to that. Do we have some counterpart or should we have a counterpart for the DEI items?
So we had DSA, and we've had a lot of conversations as a district and the DSA leaders as to whether that should continue. The specific goal of DSA was basically to make sure that we created an action plan. And we did that through the work with NYU, as well as simultaneous to that, DSA did some work that we knew needed to be done. So that group has kind of met its accomplishment. You'll notice when I talk about my goals, I think it's the second goal is create, kind of creating measures of success for ourselves and a district dashboard. That is going to be where we say, well, how do we measure a sense of belonging? How do we know that students in this group or that group, or that all students have access to honors courses? We want to kind of get that data in one place and continually update it, both with quantitative and qualitative views, to make sure we're making progress towards all of those goals.
Yeah, and my other, my question also is about how do we address perceived inequities as well? So making sure, because that can be a very challenging area, and I think it takes a special skill set to address, and so something to consider as we go along as to whether or not that's an area that we actually build out more.
That's a good point. Yes, we can definitely look at that. I think, you know, some, continuing to do surveys with folks where they can weigh in will be important in looking at that data. And so I'm hopeful that we won't have to, you know, bring in an NYU every five years to do the audit, but instead if we create the framework and have the tools for measurement and then the tools for analysis and the tools for accountability, we can start to do it ourselves, but we want to make sure we look at all those dimensions.
Other comments or questions?
I should have passed this out earlier, but here's the final version in blue, because I knew that mattered to you all.
You know, I would want to echo what Martha asked in terms of ensuring that we hold ourselves accountable. I think that philosophically, all of the goals that we set that were specific to DEI are embedded in teaching and learning and hiring and supportive employment practices and so forth. But I would like to see some way that in doing our check-ins and metrics, if we can like be able to pull out those specific things, just to remind ourselves over time, yes, all of this work is embedded and as a body, like if you look at the roadmap stuff, if you're doing this well, it's going to change the experience for the group of folks or multiple groups of folks who have historically not had as positive experience in our schools as others. So, yes, please, let's do that. Secondly, I do notice that the strategy, and I appreciate the explanation of district strategy versus district improvement goals, because the thing I noticed was kind of like missing was we will do all of this in a financially respectful way, or, you know, we will respect our taxpayers and so forth. I think that at this point, it is sort of like a norm of how we work as a district, to be lean, to be efficient whenever possible. I appreciate the acknowledgement that part of it is that even though it's not articulated in the strategy, as say it was in the last strategic plan, that doesn't mean that that philosophy is not continuing to be embedded, because I think one thing that, in addition to priority on our children, which is obviously the foremost thing, I think as taxpayers and communities where we don't get large amounts of state aid, where we can't do some of the shiny objects that other communities can do that get more grant funding and more state aid, we always have to be working in a lean environment. So I'm fine that it's not per se in this plan, and I appreciate that everything in the plan reflects what kids need, which I think is, you know, really 90% of what we do. I guess I also want to acknowledge that there are districts that have to put that in their strategic plan because currently they're facing, such as they are in Brockton, like a $14 million deficit. I guess, and it isn't hard to go from a community where everything is really in a good shape to where all of a sudden you're underwater. And so I just want to make sure that we keep that on the front burner. I really appreciate the monthly updates and so forth, but it just, I worry about that because a lot of the metrics that we deal with are not necessarily all the time in our control. So just, I appreciate that explanation because that was my big question.
And I think that's part of the operations, right? And Dawn and her team is very good at what they do and very transparent with all of you in terms of what they do. And I think we will continue to have you hold our budget accountable. We have auditors and financial people who are always looking at the budget. It's just not what we're going to be talking about day to day.
Yeah.
And should that fall off the rails, it will certainly be on what we need to put in the front burner.
You know, I would add, like, the addition of the HR professional to this team, I think that's huge. It's not in the strategic plan, but I think that it protects us, it protects our liability in terms of, you know, different sticky wickets we could end up in, and it makes it in the context of, you know, for our employees, having a safe and secure environment, having a department that's dedicated to their needs. So, you know, I just appreciate not understanding the context, like it's, like we are all about teaching and learning, and also it's a multimillion dollar business. So that's just that balance.
Thank you. I agree with you wholeheartedly, May. Other comments, questions? Okay. So now we need to vote to approve the district strategy. So for people who are new, and I'll review, each committee votes as a separate entity to approve or disapprove. And so I will, I'll start with the region, and I will formulate the motion, and then we'll do, and then Dover and Sherburne will vote, will each vote separately. Okay? So from the region, may I have a motion to approve the district strategy as presented by Beth McCoy this evening? May I have a second?
Martha, you lead a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor? Okay. The motion passes unanimously. Jeff.
Can I have a motion from Dover to approve the district strategy as presented?
Close.
Second?
Martha, you lead a second.
And all in favor? Okay. Passes to Dennis.
Okay. Dennis?
It's kind of hard for me to hear. Would Christine be able to coordinate it?
Yeah. That's probably better. And how about if you want to vote, you can just, like, raise your hand and we'll, and I'll let them know because I can see you. Does that work?
Not good.
Christine?
So could I please have a request for a motion to approve the district strategy as presented by Beth McCoy this evening? Thank you, Kristen. Can I have a second, please?
Amanda Brown, second.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there any discussion? Could I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Okay. Dennis? Dennis is voting in favor.
So moved to Dennis.
Okay, good. All right. That's great. So now we can move on to the, to the district and superintendent goals.
Okay. So again, I don't, I won't reiterate the district goals, but they're very much tied with the school improvement plans you've been hearing about, both the regional meeting and the upcoming Dover and Sherburne meetings. They're tied to year one of launching the new strategy, and then they're obviously tied to the goals that you all will hold me accountable to, of which I'm proposing three. The first one about being, teaching and learning, so we talked about those nine best practices, and it's one thing to have them on paper, it's another thing to actually see growth and more of them in the classroom. And that's what I'm proposing my goal is, is that I work with Denny and the principals and the teachers to make these practices more regular in the classroom. So that's the first goal in essence. The second goal, districts have measured success. So again, it goes to Martha's point, which is we now have the big initiatives that we want to tackle. So now it's up to Denny, Dawn, Kate, and myself to say, here's year one, year two, year three, who's responsible for what, and how will we measure or see that those things are actually moving and hold ourselves accountable to all of the goals, including the DEI ones? So I want to come up with some sort of protocol or dashboard for us all to use, which will likely play into the annual report that comes out in June of next year. Last year's just came out today. Not a lot of data, lots of, you know, important information about teaching and learning and sports and athletics and clubs, but adding more of that quantitative data, which we will get from holding ourselves accountable moving forward. So that's goal number two. And the third is continuing to work on communication, which you know was a goal last year, but working with our website, our communication hub, and making sure that we are being transparent in sharing who we are as a district as we revisit our roots, so that there's no question about who we are and what we stand for. That's them in a nutshell.
Questions, comments? It all sort of dovetails very nicely with everything we've been talking about, which makes it pretty easy to understand, which is wonderful.
Thank you. There's supposed to be a through line, so I hope you see.
There is a total through line. There is an absolute through line. And I really like, I like the evidence-based, measured piece of this, because I think that's really important. Other questions, comments, or are we ready to vote?
I have a question on number three. I'm curious for, one of the things, when I was reading this, around the benchmarks. So definitely makes sense, the new website and increased access, but the only thing that felt missing was like engagement from the stakeholders, so the community. I don't know if it's a baseline survey of do people feel like they know how to get information or maybe community engagement, but that was just the one piece that, you know, professionally, like, you can put a lot of information out there, but if it's not actually serving the needs of your stakeholders, how much value are you providing? I'm curious if there's an opportunity to add that as something we track over time.
Yep. That's a great suggestion. We did a communication survey two years ago, which is what was the basis for how we built the website, but it's to be important to go back and make sure that people can now find what they need in places and in the avenues.
And I think there's such an opportunity coming off of a lot of changes and experiences over the past couple of years with COVID and just other things to say, okay, you know, we're moving forward, we're starting fresh, here's the plan. And I love how it all comes together, but it does feel like there's an opportunity to say, you know, do you feel like you know where to go to get things? Maybe the answer is no. And then at the end of the year, or three years, or five years, or whatever it may be, right? Do you feel better? Do you know where things are?
Valid point. Thank you.
All right. So we need to vote to approve the superintendent goals. So I'm going to start with the region. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent goals as presented by Superintendent McCoy this evening?
Kate Potter, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Andrew Johnson, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Losing my mind. All in favor, thank you. All in favor, thank you. All right, the vote is unanimous. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Dover, can I have a vote? Sorry, can I, can I get a, a motion? Can I get a motion to approve the district goals as presented tonight by Superintendent McCoy?
That's good.
Go to it.
Thank you, Paulie. Do I have a second? Thank you, Gypsy. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Thank you. Christine?
May I request a motion to approve the superintendent goals as presented by Beth McCoy this evening? Thank you, Kristen. May I have a second?
Amanda Brown, second.
Thank you, Amanda. Is there any discussion? Having heard no discussion, may I see all in favor of this motion?
Yes.
Your answer is unanimous.
Okay. All right, good. Oh, so we've made it to the consent agenda. And there are, you're going to talk about substitute rates. Are you also going to talk about the?
Yeah, that's under communications.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm going to turn it over to you.
So, you know, we had never, we had not changed our substitute rates for a really, really long time, which is why we're bringing them forward now. So during COVID, we had to continue to pivot, to pivot, to pivot, to pivot. And so we've done some research, and I think we are bringing forward tonight the substitute rates that we think will be here for a little while. So just to give you some perspective, the regular day sub when prior to COVID was $95 a day. So we have raised it a couple times during COVID to keep up with the market. 125 per day is the new rate. We had 115 last year. We went up to 125 for this fiscal year. Looking at our area adjacent districts, which would be sort of what you'd want to look at for people coming to substitute, we are at the, we are actually pretty good. You'd have to go to like Wellesley to find a rate higher than that. We used to have this sort of step process where, I don't know how they used to track it, but like zero to 10 days would be $80, and then you'd get a $5 raise. Wellesley sort of does that, which is why their rates get higher. But we have shared this rate, and we are actually getting really good feedback that 125 is worth everyone's while to come and be a substitute teacher. We had a long-term sub position, that's anything, assignments over 20 days. Prior to COVID, it was like 151. Actually, it was lower than that. It was like, I forget what it was. 151 was the last rate. We've upped it to 190 for, again, that's our assignments over 20 days. We did increase our nurse sub rate, used to be the same as a substitute, but obviously during COVID, that rate was drive up, and $200 is actually what most school districts are paying to get a certified nurse in the building. Luckily for us, we have our floating nurse now, so we don't use a nurse substitute as much, but when we do, that's sort of the rate that we have. And then under, during COVID too, with educational assistance, we typically didn't substitute when an EA was out, but we started that practice because a body was very important during COVID as we had small groups and such. Under certain circumstances where we know an EA is going to be out for a couple of days or a week, we do have a substitute rate, and that's 115. So we're bringing forward these rates tonight to be approved, and hopefully will settle for a couple of years. But I wanted to make sure that you were aware of where we were. We didn't bring all the interim ones, but now I do feel like we're settled, and we'll go back to where school committees do approve these rates.
Thank you.
I just have a question. What is, if I, am I asking, what is Wellesley's? Who said Wellesley?
They go up, because they'll do, they'll go up to like 165 if you do like 200, a lot of days.
It's a tier.
Yeah, it's a tier, more tier than, than a lot of districts do, but they're, a larger school district have more to fill. But for the, if you look at our neighboring districts, 125 are at the top, because some are still like at that $85, $95 rate.
I have another question. How are we doing on filling substitute positions? Are we in better shape than we were?
Yeah, I think we have a healthy list now. We haven't really, started a school, you don't have to pull out as much, but we have been, so our new director of human resources now will be probably more engaged with looking for substitutes. We have a lot of our retirees at some of the schools that will come back and do daily substitutes, and a lot of community members. So Sue Conley is still with us, as even though she retired from athletics, she's still doing our sub coordination every morning. And so far, so good. We've definitely seen an uptick versus where we were during COVID.
Other questions? Okay, also in your packet is the minutes for the June 13th meeting. I assume no one has any changes to those? That's good. So, huh? Yeah, I think, should we vote on this and then you can talk about Theta and Ceta? Okay, so, may I have a motion at the region to approve the consent agenda as presented in the package?
Andrew Johnson, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. Jeff?
Dover, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the packet tonight? tonight?
Martha Castle, so moved.
Thank you, Martha, second.
Thank you, Gypsy.
All in, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Okay. Christine?
And could I request a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the agenda for this evening's meeting?
Amanda Brown, so moved.
Thank you, Amanda. May I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please raise your hand.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one last item, which is enrollment in the extended day program.
Exactly. So this is enrollment as of last Friday, and so it's giving updates. So our, the programs between Dover and Sherburne, as you can see, sort of have a different sort of cohort of students. So in Dover, our enrolled students are 99 individual students, but those are comprised of students that attend five, four, and three days. So that's why the number seems higher, because you could slot in more kids if they're not all coming five days. We do currently have 10 students waitlisted. Those are all new families. So anyone who registered in the spring is in the program. So these are families that have presented, who are new to the program. And there's always, I will say Dover has a more ins and outs, so most likely, some of those new families will get, get in eventually, because we always have families come and go. It's much more fluid, I think, in the, in the Dover arena for DETA. Sherburne, which was where we had a lot of discussions last year, so we currently have 90 students enrolled, all five-day enrollments. So right now in Sherburne, if you're less than a five day, you're definitely on the waitlist, because we give priority to those students who want to be in the program for five days. Even with that, we still have 19 students waitlisted on the five day. So I'm giving you the total of students, not families, because there are, in that 19, they're not 19 families, it's 19 students. And the, primarily, they're new families. We were able to accommodate almost everybody who had been on the waitlist prior, and we've got, there's, I say primarily, because there's five students in that 19 that they're hoping to bring in in October. And so that number will go down. And then we do have 16 students who are on the wait, on the waitlist with four or three-day enrollments, should anything crop up, but we've, obviously, the five-day families would come before them. We talked a lot last year about how we could increase the enrollment in Sherburne, and so what the director was able to do was, we, we kept thinking, and maybe we should do K1 in a separate, like a little smaller program, but where we landed was, the fourth and fifth grade cohort is almost like in a little separate program, they're going to a different part of the building, because then that allows to, the K through three, to at least have a centralized gathering spot for some of their communal activities. You cannot put a large group like that and run. So we're up 10 from last year, but know that we're probably going to be adding, that 90 is going to go up a little higher. So I, I give credit. It's really hard. I don't know, I mean, the employment market is still really, really tough. We have full-time EA positions, a couple that we haven't been able to fill. We're fortunate that some of the EAs that do work for us all day are willing to stay, and we've made that pay competitive in order to entice them to stay. We've done signing bonuses, we gave retention bonuses last year, so we're doing everything in our power to maintain and keep staff that we have. And so I feel like we're in a much better position than we were last year, but it's been a lot of work on both the director's part and then the overall director of community ed. It's like, it's constantly shifting and pivoting to try to get this to work. So I'll be, I'm really looking forward to, hopefully, if we give another update in a couple of months, you're going to see that Sherburne number up a little higher, and hopefully some of the, the waitlists look a little, a little lower. But there's, in the current setup, there's, in the space that we have available to use in Sherburne, you know, almost 100 kids is a huge program. And so I, I want to just put, break, put that framework around that. It's safety comes first for us, and, you know, even in these hotter days, we've maintained the SHEDA program, so I give them credit for that. We really do want to help our families in Sherburne, and I think we're giving them a really positive experience. I mean, there's very few districts, a lot of the area districts actually have closed the programs, because the staffing has become so difficult. So again, I think that there's kudos to our, to our directors and our staff who agree to stay till 6 o'clock and take care of students who've had already had a long day, is, you know, commendable. And so we are definitely being as competitive as we can with the rates, continuing to, in fact, for Dover, Sherburne, Community of the Flyer that just went out, there's an ad in there. We did get one or two people from that ad last year, so we're hopeful. And I have to, again, we couldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do this program if we didn't have our educational assistants agree to stay, because they're probably about half of our staff.
That's a long day. 3:00 AM or 6:00 PM.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, and they don't all work five days, so a lot of them share a group. So just to give you perspective, we, we put the students in groups by K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then, and depending on how many students are in there, you have a group leader, and then you have some assistants, because there's a ratio that we must maintain. And then you also have to make sure if a child has to go to the restroom, or you have to go take care of someone, you have the adults present. So our EAs sort of team up on those five days to cover a group leader. I mean, our group leaders, we try to have there all five days for the consistency, but our EAs are the ones who then team up and are the additional staffing. So, you know, I, I give, again, there's a lot of programs around here that have closed, and I don't think, I, I think our waitlist numbers look pretty, pretty good this year, and we'll always try to get as many families as we can in, but there are some limitations that are always, we're always going to have for this high, but if you think about how many students are actually in Pine Hill, we, we accommodate a huge amount in our extended day program.
Maggie?
Just, I want to acknowledge and thank you and specifically the team at DETA and SHEDA that have worked to address these concerns. I know, I was getting a lot of communication from community members last year, and like, weirdly, like, you probably already know, like, DETA and SHEDA sort of somehow fall under the umbrella of the region, even though, obviously, like, it doesn't match, like, you guys. But, and so like, I, I understand from families what a crisis this is, and kind of folks assume that there is going to be after-school care, and, and, you know, these numbers speak to the challenges. And so huge thank you for all the work that got done over the course of the year to make this program more accessible. There is no interest, like, community partners, Tobin, YMCA, nobody wants to come to Sherburne and, and like, take kids, like.
Take the program over?
Well, no, not, no, 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 not take the program over. Like, in other schools that I've been involved in, like, there's the Tobin boss, and there's the Y boss, and, like, nobody wants to come to Sher, because Sherburne, like, clearly needs it. Like, how do we find these providers and find out if they want to do that?
Yeah, but I think they're struggling as well.
Yeah. I'd like to say that in the SEC meetings at Jifring last year, there was a discussion about how we cannot so much extend necessarily the extended day programs, but consider programs that can add on to the school day, like, take the kids from the school, have the program be within the school or in the fields. And it was a welcome addition this year to have several programs that start at the end of the school day, and take the kids down to the playgrounds to start soccer, baseball, all additional things. And I think that was through coordination with the Parks and Rec program. So that might not be exactly what you're looking for, but it was definitely a welcome addition to extend the school day, not to 5 o'clock, but to a little bit later than the.
Yeah, and community ed, which is why DETA, SHEDA sits at the region, is why DETA, SHEDA runs through community ed, actually runs youth programs too. We have the cupcakes and the chess, and that all happens after, so that helps some families if they don't need that 6 o'clock, it gives you an hour. But we do have, and we have great attendance at those, those programs as well. They usually actually sell out.
The cupcake one is already on.
It's impossible to get into. It's my alarm on that one.
So we do offer both Park and Rec is, is heavy at Dover, and then the community ed and youth run programs as well, so.
Anybody in the internet who runs an after-school program?
Just don't take our place.
No. You have to bring your own.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Dawn. And it is now 7:53, and we are going to move to adjourn. Can I have a motion from the region to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous. Jeff?
Motion from Dover to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Dover.
All right, Martha, second.
Thank you, Martha. All in favor?
Christine?
I have a motion from Sherburne to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Thank you.